The pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number two is invocation. For that, our good friend Dennis Hudson. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good to be here again. And I know you all got a lot of work to do, so let's pray. Father, we just want to come today again to say thank you. We're into a new year, and, Father, we didn't know what to expect. So far, it's been a little bit of a wild ride. Tomorrow's going to be a big day, and, Lord, we know that there's a lot of uneasiness. We also know that you're in control. So we're asking that tomorrow and tonight, and even the rest of this year, would be a year that is, even though it might be different, a year that we trust you and lean on you and have great success because of that. Lord, we looked at the agenda for tonight, and I see there's a lot of business that needs to be done. So we're asking that you would just guide this council through that, that it would be not too lengthy, that they would be able to accomplish all that they need to, and that what is done would let this city be good as it is now, but also that it would let this city grow and move into the future. Lord, we trust you. As you lead us, we praise you for your goodness. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Bless you.
Thank you, Reverend. Item number three is audience participation. That's covered on the screen, but also, please silence your devices so we can have a good meeting. If you need to take a phone call, please leave the chambers. Additionally, if there is any item that is listed that you would like to speak, please see the city secretary, and you can fill out a form, and you are able to speak on any item that is on the agenda. All right, moving forward. Item number four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of January 5th. B is action regarding recommendation from library board for appointment of Gene King's library board. C is action regarding resolution 2021, D S 3, approval of sale of property described as lot 25, block 19, Rantown North Edition. D is action regarding approval for Weaver and Tidwell L P to perform fiscal year 2021 audit. E is action regarding disposal of city surplus items and agreement with Tommy Lutz Auctioneering. F, action regarding acceptance of water sewer facility easement from Arden Mills. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Will oppose? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum. All are here. So thanks for coming, folks. I appreciate your time. Moving to item number five, and this is recognition of volunteer of the year and volunteer family of the year. And for that, Director of Community Services, Keith Reinhardt.
Hey, Attorney Man, Council. Just wanted to bring something to you tonight, really proud of, really excited about. A few years ago, our animal services manager was tasked to basically revamp our and rebuild our volunteer program. Our animal services center, whether it's ours or City of Fort Worth, or you name a city, they cannot survive without our volunteers. Whether you have a staff of five, like we do, or you have a staff of 105, they cannot survive without their volunteers, and we can't either. And we have a very much so growing volunteer program, thanks to the help and the very much hard work of our animal services manager, Jose Wieland, and his staff. And tonight, just wanted to turn something over to you, some excitement that we have, that we wanted to recognize some of those volunteers in our city that help us and help our animals. Turn it over to Jose Wieland, our animal services manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for entertaining this agenda tonight. As my department head, Mr. Reinhardt, did mention, I was tasked with revamping our volunteer program. I reached out to numerous cities in the area that had volunteer programs that were thriving and went with some, got some info from them, and kind of restructured our volunteer program and added a couple of programs with it in the, that the volunteers were able to help us out with. Back in 2014, Eagle Mountain Saginaw I S D actually reached out to us. They have what's called a job program, and what it does is it puts kids with special needs in a work environment, so that way they're able to go into the workforce as soon as they graduate. This is where Brendan McCann, our volunteer of the year, came into play. He was not a member of Eagle Mountain Saginaw I S D, but he was a special assistance kid that needed some workforce introduction. So his parents reached out to us. We did put him in our volunteer program, and he was with us for about three years before he went off to school. We went ahead, before he left, he took the cat room and made it his own. That's what he was responsible for doing. So we went ahead and renamed the cat room the Brendan McCann Cattery. He was gone for probably about two years, and he decided to come back. School wasn't for him. He came back, and he started volunteering again, and he's been there ever since. Last year, I believe, Brendan, from January 1st to the end of the fiscal year, worked over 445 volunteer hours, if I remember correctly. That went ahead and gave him the slot for volunteer of the year. We felt that he deserved that. Some of the stuff that we've gone with the volunteer program is, is we've added fostering. Used to, people can just come in off the street and foster animals that needed fostering. We went ahead and made that to where only active volunteers could do that. That way, we're familiar with the people that are coming in and taking our animals out, caring for them while they're in their time of need, whether it be newborns, injured animals, animals that are sick, animals, just like one dog we just had, went through ACL surgery. So he needed to be in a quiet environment where he could recoup. He was gone for probably about six months, and the foster group, or the foster parent for him, wound up being what we call a foster fail, which means they wind up falling in love with him and giving him his forever home. One of the programs that I added was also what we call a borrow-a-buddy program. Borrow-a-buddy is, one of our active volunteers can come into the shelter at any time they want to. They're able to sign a dog out from our facility, take it for a day or two, a week, however long they want to keep them. Okay? The only thing that we ask when they bring the animal back is what his mentality was while he was gone, how he did it in a home environment. Was he good with other dogs? Was he good with kids? Something that we could go and get more information on that animal versus him being in a kennel. Okay? They're able to take the dog out of the shelter, put him in an environment where he's not high-stressed. I went ahead and implemented those two programs. Since those two programs have been implemented, and I revamped the volunteer program, our fiscal year volunteer numbers, our hours worked from 2018, 2019 fiscal year was 2,730 hours. That's the most volunteer hours we've ever had at Saginaw Animal Control. Okay? 2019 to 2020, we were going to beat those numbers. Unfortunately, COVID hit, but we were still able to get 2,337 hours.
Wow.
Worth of volunteer hours. Our volunteers come in, they don't only help with walking the animals, they also help with administrative duties. If we need administrative help, they help with the laundry. They also come in on holidays and help us with our feeding clean if the shelter tech that's working that day decided they needed help. Okay? I did bring some of my staff with me. If you'll stand up. The lady in the back right-hand corner of the building, that's Animal Control Officer Pratt, Christina Pratt. She's been with us how long?
Two years.
Two years. This is our newest animal control officer. Her name's Brianna Farley. She's been with us since October of last year. And this is our lead shelter tech, Christina Genshak. She's the one that spoils the animals. Those animals are her kids. She comes in on her days off, at nights to give medicine, stuff like that. She loves those dogs. She can tell you every little quirk about those dogs. Okay? One of the things we also did was mention, we have what's called a volunteer appreciation. Okay? So July of 2019, we decided to throw a pool party for our volunteers to give our thanks to them. Unfortunately, last year, we weren't able to do that. At the July 19 pool party, we decided to come up with the volunteer of the year and volunteer family of the year award. That's based on the number of hours that a volunteer works to get that award. As I'd mentioned, Brendan McCann, he's not able to be here tonight. He received our volunteer of the year award. And the Spencer family, which is just outside the door, I'll bring them in here in a minute, they started, I believe, in July of 2020, and from July of 2020 to end of September, they put in almost 300 hours. They come in every Saturday and work from the time we open to the time we shut. So from 8:00 to 2:00, they're there. Okay? Not only do they put their time in and assist us with cleaning stuff, they've also donated money towards the cats' adoption fees. I believe they donated $25 per cat towards their adoption fee. So we do have volunteer groups that come in. Saginaw High School softball team has reached out to us, Coach Money, and asked that his students or his softball players be able to come in and do community service hours or volunteer hours. We were set to do that, and then COVID hit, so they're not able to do that. But he did reach out to me as soon as the school year started, and as soon as COVID's been cleared and we're able to open back up, or the school district's able to do, open their stuff back up, they've reached out with interest to come back and volunteer at our shelter. So at this time, I'd like to bring in the Spencer family to go ahead and get their acknowledgement for volunteer family of the year. So this is Elsa Spencer, Sean Spencer, and Nathaniel Spencer. Kobe Spencer, he wasn't able to make it due to being out of town for work. He first started coming to the shelter and volunteering, and then the family joined after that. So this is our fiscal year 2019, 2020 volunteer family of the year.
Thank you very much.
Jose, you want to give this to them? Normally, I would, but let's just be, there you go. Maybe Keith, take a picture of the family.
Y'all want to come over here real quick? So the award says 2020 volunteer family of the year presented to the Spencer family, Kobe, Elsa, Sean, and Nathaniel, in appreciation of your outstanding dedication and ongoing service to the City of Saginaw Animal Services and the animals in our care.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jose.
Thank you.
Great work, guys. We appreciate it. Y'all need to come back more often. Good to see y'all. All right, next on the list is presentation of comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended September 30th, and for that, our friends at Weaver and Tidwell.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here today. My name is Jennifer Ripka. I am the engagement partner on the external audit, and I also have Leah Reeves here with me as well, and she acts as the manager on the engagement. You all should have the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2020. Within this report is a lot of pages of very interesting information. I know all of you know that. As far as the information that we're responsible for, the independent auditor's report, it starts on page three of the statements, and it includes management's responsibility for these statements, our responsibility, which is to express an opinion on the financial statements and complete the audit. And we have issued an unmodified opinion that is a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that can be placed on a set of financial statements. As you move through the report, you'll find management's discussion and analysis. That is a lot of great information with regards to what occurred during the fiscal year. So if you're looking for a snapshot of the fiscal year, that's where I would point you to. As you move further into the statements, you'll find what most people would look at as the balance sheet, income statement. They're called different things because it's a governmental entity, and Gatsby likes to make things difficult. But the piece that I want to point you all to is the balance sheet for the governmental funds, and you'll notice that total fund balance ended...
What page are we on?
On page 24.
Okay, thank you.
Total fund balance ended at 44.2, and that includes the general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and then all the other governmental funds that are not major funds. And so special revenue funds that aren't to be included on this first page, that are further back in the combining statements, that's the other governmental fund section. It doesn't include enterprise funds, so utility, billing, water sewer, that's not included within this. But there are several different types of categories for fund balance, five to be exact. Here at the city, you all have non-spendable, which is prepaid items, can't be spent, restricted, that's outside donor restriction or by law. It can't be spent on anything other than what that specified purpose is. And then committed donations, and so that's going to be committed by those donated items or monies. And then assigned for future capital purchases, and so those are assigned by, not this group, but it can be assigned, it can be assigned by you all, but it doesn't require formal action to occur. And so those are assigned for capital projects. And then unassigned is going to be every, all the money that's left over that can be utilized, it's unrestricted. And that's 9.9 million that we ended at. So in total, net change in fund balance ended at 17.1 million, and the majority of that increase is in that capital projects, which is on page 26. You'll notice that capital projects fund, there was an issuance of debt of 17.3 million, and that money had not been spent as a fiscal year end, so it's sitting in fund balance, ready to be spent, but it is restricted for capital projects. As you keep on moving through the financial statements, you'll find the enterprise funds, which is water and sewer, but also the notes to the financial statements. If you're looking for what a specific number relates to, the background behind it, the notes most likely will describe that, if it's a significant number. And then the very, very back is a 10-year breakdown of different types of operating demographic financial information. And so if you want to look back several years, that's where I'd point the council to look. And so there's information about property taxes, debt ratios, pretty much anything that you would want from a financial standpoint. New this year, because the city received coronavirus relief funds, you all were required to have a single audit. And so at the very back, there are two reports, starting on page 31, 131, sorry, 131, which is the independent auditor's report under governmental auditing standards, and that's going to include internal controls over compliance with regards to the financial statements, as well as just compliance in general, like Public Funds Investment Act and things like that. The next report on page 133 is going to be the report for compliance for the federal financial assistance. So that coronavirus relief funds, that's the report with regards to that testing that we did. So this is new this year. If you go back to the years past, we didn't have that. And the reason for that is because you all received the money, and it was in excess of $750,000. You expended in excess of $750,000. So there is those two reports. Then on page 136 is the schedule of findings and question costs. This is kind of like a report card for the federal financial assistance, single audit. And so it goes through that it's an unmodified opinion, there were no issues with regards to compliance, no issues from an internal control standpoint. It speaks to the program that we tested, which is the coronavirus relief funds. And then on the very bottom, I want to point this out because when you look at it, it seems to be negative because it states the auditee qualified as a low, as a low-risk auditee, and it says no. The reason for that is because you all have not had a single audit in the past. That is it. So it's not negative in that y'all did something wrong, or there was an issue, it's just because there wasn't, there hasn't been anything to look back on. And that's determined by uniform guidance. I have no control over that, Lee, and I can't decide that. So you have to have been audited in a single audit environment for two fiscal years before that moves to a yes. So wanted to point that out. But the next two pages, 137 and then 138, speaks to that there were no matters to be reported from governmental auditing standard standpoint, and there were no findings, no question cost. And so during the course of our testing of that federal financial assistance, we determined that you all were in compliance, and there were internal controls over compliance with regards to that program. A lot of information, and more information than we normally have. So I'll open it up to you all if you have any questions about that, because I know it's a lot.
Counsel, questions? Patrick?
So on this single audit, is it fair to say that we received $1.5 million in federal funds? Is that, is that what I'm reading on 139?
Yes. So you all received and expended, that's really, it's not that you necessarily received it, but you all expended that during the course of the fiscal year. So sometimes when you're looking at other cities in particular, they, they have a significant amount of federal funding that comes in. And so when you look at their page, that doesn't mean they received all of that, I just admit that's what they expended, because some grants are cost reimbursement, and you don't get it upfront to, so.
That's, and really, I guess I ask the question backwards. We've spent 1.5 million, but have we received that amount back from the government?
Yes, y'all, y'all received it upfront.
We actually had 1.2 million in coronavirus funds that we received from the county, and we spent all but 20-some thousand, which we then spent in October of this fiscal year. And then the other 300 and some is actually Green Ribbon Grant. We didn't actually receive the cash or spend the cash, but we have to account for it as if we did. And the Green Ribbon Grant was a project along the boulevard, the beautification along the boulevard.
Got it. So it's not necessarily expended as of today, but it's committed.
Right. And so like what Kim was talking about on page 140, the non-cash assistance piece, that's just a GAAP reporting requirement. So while there's no cash that came into the city, nor was there any cash that went out, and TechDOT was taking care of that for the city, it's still y'all's, you know, assets, and so it has to be reported as though. So it just is a revenue and expenditure, so an in and an out, even though there was no in and out. It's just a reporting mechanism.
So the second comment, question that I have is page 96 and 97. This is our net position over time. And I just want to, I want to point out first to the council, sure. 96 and 97, yes, sir. That over time, I think it's clear to see that the, that the city has continued to grow in its net position. There may have been one blip in 2014 to 15, but I think it's safe to say that we're probably in the best, best position we've been in, in the city's history. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah. I will point out that net position also is government-wide statements, and so that takes it to the accrual basis. And so when you all are looking at it from a standpoint of, like, when you're going through the budget process and stuff like that, it's going to be significantly different than what you're used to looking at, because it's on a modified accrual basis, which would be on page, on page 102 and 103, but it's still the same type of, you know, snapshot in that...
All the dollars have respectively reduced across the board.
Right.
Right. But I think it's important to point out where we are in terms of position over time, knowing that we've gone through a very significant change in city leadership over this same time period, and we've maintained this continued growth and trajectory of improvement from year to year.
Right.
So I think that's important to point out. That is, that is by no small effort of staff. That needs to be recognized, and I just want to make sure that everyone recognizes that, and I want to express appreciation to this group and to staff for seeing that year over year over year.
You're here.
Thanks.
And I didn't mention this, but I should have. Thank you to Kim. She always does a great job, but this year, I will say, it was even more difficult from, you know, even an audit standpoint, because a lot of us are remote, and so I want to thank her, because she always makes it easy, but in this, in this environment also, you know, makes it difficult. So we didn't have any blips like some of our other cities that we do, you know, serve as well.
We realize how fortunate we are to have Kim, so you're, I absolutely agree. Other questions, counsel? We good otherwise? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. There's no accident on this one, right?
We need to acknowledge receipt of it or anything.
Thank y'all, and thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward, that was seven, right?
Six.
Oh, sorry. Seven, consideration action regarding approval of final plat, UCD Saginaw Edition lots 1 and 2 block A. And for that, Rick Trias, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Of course, this is a final plat for UCC development. You considered and approved the preliminary plat on September 15th of this last year. The plat area, total area is the same as preliminary plat. The only difference between this and the preliminary plat was that the commercial area in the plat was subdivided into seven lots in the preliminary plat. Under this final plat, they've made it one large lot, the commercial, which is the commercial development piece that fronts on 156 and Bailey Boswell. The area of the commercial tract and the area of the multifamily tract are exactly the same as the preliminary plat. There is, I guess, a special condition associated with approval of this plat. The Plan and Zoning Commission, of course, met last week and unanimously recommended approval of the final plat, but associated with that is approval of an escrow agreement. You may recall that there is a median opening in turn lanes that are desired on FM 156. The developer's been diligently working with TechDOT, so we all know that story. And so to get around that, we are having the developer put up funds so that the city would enter into an advanced funding agreement with TechDOT to accomplish that work at some point in the future. And so they'll be putting up escrow funds. You will see that agreement at your February 2nd meeting, hopefully. We transmitted that agreement back to the developer today and awaiting to see if there are any comments back to us. But anyway, we recommend approval of the final plat, subject to execution of the escrow agreement with the developer. Have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Counsel, questions? I have one good question for Brandon, since he's here. I have one good question for Bren since he's here. Just will you remind us, and we haven't heard this in a while. You know, the final plat process is, I've always thought, a little confusing because it comes to us. And the final plat's already been approved by P and Z, which I believe is the final legislative step or per state law. Will you explain that, please?
Certainly. So under state law, the planning commission is the authority, municipal authority, responsible for plat approval. There is an optional election that the council can make to require the additional approval of council. It's not mandatory. At some point in this city's history, the sitting council at the time decided that it also wanted to see plats. And so that's why this additional layer of approval is required.
We're really just window dressing, is what you're telling us. We're pretty and all, but we're not, P and Z did the heavy lifting.
I suppose so.
Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify. Okay. Questions, counsel?
To clarify, the council's function at this point is ministerial, is that right? We cannot override what P and Z has done.
You could override it if for some reason staff reported to you that the plat did not comply with your subdivision regulations.
Gotcha. It's, it's limited to a non-compliance issue.
That's correct. Now, you do have the condition, which is discretionary. Because obviously this plat application does not meet all of the requirements because of this TechDOT delay, unfortunately. And so that, that portion is discretionary.
And that has to do with the escrow.
That, correct.
Got it.
Other questions, counsel? If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the plat as presented, conditioned upon, I guess, finalization of the escrow.
Valerie Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand? Close, close. Thank you. Thank you, Rick. No, item eight. So at 632, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding request for specific use permit to the operation of a massage therapy and semi-permanent makeup slash tattoo use on property located at 900 Blue Mound Road, adoption of ordinance 2021-03. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Trias.
Thank you, Mayor. And the applicants are just walking in. This particular SUP request originally started out as a massage therapy and also a permanent tattoo. That was the way the application was filled out. The zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission considered it as such. However, during discussions with the applicant and testimony for the P and Z, we found that really the, the tattooing is more of a cosmetic tattooing. Was it semi-permanent or, or, well, a semi-permanent tattoo?
From eyebrows, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with, because of my wife, with microblading and things of that nature, which are semi-permanent. So anyway, the, so the, really the substantive, substantive part of the request is the massage therapy part, which is, requires an SUP in community commercial. Massage therapy is regulated by the Texas Department of Licensing Regulation. And, and the, again, the Planning and Zoning Commission, of course, met last week and they recommended approval, unanimously approval of the massage therapy and semi-permanent makeup tattoo use on property at 900 Blue Mound Road. But specific to suites 156, 168, and 172, which is where the operation will take place. So the applicant's here tonight to answer any questions unless you have questions of me.
This is, I want to make sure I understand, this is an existing business that's really just expanding what they offer, right?
That is correct. There is a salon presence on the property today, but they, they're expanding their operation to include the massage therapy, which they'll have a licensed therapist on site, I believe.
My understanding is this is more going to be more of a day spa, full concept day spa as opposed to whatever.
That's my understanding also, but again, the applicant's here, so.
That's the best way to characterize it. Counsel, do you have any questions? Patrick?
There was, there was one vote against at P and Z. Is that right?
I don't believe so. There's a minutes.
I think, I think Vice Chair Haney is what I'm reading here.
Yep, that's what it says.
So just, can, can someone just give me a feel for, what was the contention there? I guess I'm not, I, I have, personally, I have no contention, but I'd like to know.
I don't recall that, that Vice Chairman Haney expressed what his concerns were at the meeting.
Okay.
I think he had more of a concern about the tattooing than he did the massage part of it.
But is the, is the current business performing the tattooing? Was it, was it already brought into the community, providing those services?
I don't believe the, the current business is providing the tattooing. Or, or that is, you are doing the makeup, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, but you're, you were currently doing that. It's just kind of bringing that to light, is what I'm understanding. So I, how, this is a question of Bren. Bren, how do we, how do we differentiate eyebrow tattooing and mom on the shoulder?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part.
And, and mom with a heart on the shoulder? And how, how do we differentiate that?
I might be able to help with that. There, in the, in the council memo, because I'm familiar with tattoos.
And I think, I mean, I can under, so, but I think it's, I just want to make sure we're not getting into a slippery slope because there's, I think there's a difference between body art and cosmetic tattooing.
And if you look at the, at the council memo, there, the definitions from the zoning ordinance differentiate between cosmetic tattoo establishment, which is more of the cosmetic versus tattoo parlor, body piercing studio. And so there is a differentiation there. There's the micro injections, again, like I said, the microblading process, which is, which is a form of tattooing, if you will, but, but not permanent. That fades over time and has to be reapplied, in my understanding.
Something like that.
Yeah.
My youngest daughter loves Hannah, so I know, I understand that. But so just so I, I'm clear though, Bren, is, do you see a potential test to this coming if we do have a tattoo parlor wanting to come in and, and saying, hey, you've granted the SUP to this group. Why won't you grant it to us?
No. Each, each application stands on its own, zoning is legislative and purely discretionary. It would have to demonstrate that your denial was wholly arbitrary and unreasonable, which would be very difficult to do.
And if we clearly document that we understand as a council, this decision is being made based on cosmetic tattooing and not mom on the shoulder, body art type.
That further, further supports it. Yes, sir.
You're not going to be putting mom on somebody's shoulder, are you?
Not unless you want it on your forehead.
Do it, do it, Patrick, come on. I'll chip in 20 bucks.
And Mayor Council, I need to add one other thing. We did receive a, a letter of opposition from a neighbor, Ms. Bailey Brewer, who lives at Highland Station, and her reason, her comment, she's opposed. There's no reason to add this adjacent to residential property. So that's the, that's her objection.
Okay. Counsel, do you have a question?
Yeah. Do our applications, I noticed that their application is massage therapy and permanent makeup tattoo, makeup slash tattoo. Do we not have the semi-permanent or the right verbiage on the application? Or was this something that the applicant?
They, they define what their use is going to be. So they erroneously, I guess, put permanent tattoo on the application, but that's not the case. It's the semi-permanent, so.
Does that need to be corrected or can we correct it at this point in time?
Corrects what? The application or?
The application.
The form or, I'm, I'm not following your question. I'm sorry, council member.
They said they request the massage therapy and permanent makeup tattoo use.
So the ordinance says semi, semi-permanent makeup tattoo business is permitted. The ordinance will be the governing document. The application is just merely the request to come before you.
Okay. I just didn't know if we needed to clarify the wordage on that.
Well, I think that the P and Z, through their discussion and our deliberation tonight, have clarified that it is a semi-permanent tattoo, temporary.
Okay. Other questions, counsel? Mayor?
Maybe this was already going to occur, but I think it will be helpful for the applicant to come forward and just discuss more, you know, describe her, her situation.
Sir, if you'd like to, please. You'll introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Crystal Mays. I am Lexi Strong's assistant. Lexi Strong is basically the owner and operator of the Lash Bar Elite Spa and her browology as well.
Excellent.
So as far as the microblading, she's kind of the genius and the mastermind behind it. She has gone through a lot of classes and things like that. So scientifically speaking, she's going to be the one that can kind of tell you what it differentiates between the tattooing and then the microblading. Go ahead, Lexi.
The semi-permanent or microblading is came about from the permanent makeup before, when they do the permanent brows, you know, still with the needle and et cetera. But that's the permanent makeup, where, where it stay for a couple of years. Whereas the microblading is the handheld, not the machine, but it's a handheld, kind of like a scratch. On here, it's staying the color on here, but like you said, it's like a henna. But it stay on like eight months, depend on the skin type. And it stay on eight months, 12 months, 15, up to a year, a year and a year and a half. For some people, up to two years, for example, but it's lining up, so you kind of come back. But it's no blood, it's not, not anywhere like a tattoo shop would be. And it's all strictly cosmetic procedure, eyebrows, eyeliner, nose and lips.
And then we have a plethora of different clientele that basically come in. You know, as we age as women, we lose our eyebrows and things like that, especially if you're coloring them in. And we do have a big population of people who have gone through cancer treatments as well. You know, that you lose your hair all over your body. And it makes us as women feel good when we kind of look normal, right? So when you do the microblading concept and you're able to make those hair-like strokes and make them very thin and fine and actually look like hair instead of the penciled-in eyebrows where it can be kind of off-center or something like that, it just kind of offers that confidence back into the women. It's a, you know, it's not necessarily the, the needle that you use the, the gun with. It's just basically kind of like a scratched razor blade, if that makes any sense.
Does?
Counsel, other questions for the business owner?
And this is a, this is a strip center that it's already in. Is this, so the concern of it being next to a residential or adjacent to a residential area? It's a, it's a commercial use facility to begin with, right? I mean, we're not just putting this in a house next door to a neighborhood.
Correct. So basically what happened is we own Elite Spa. So Elite Spa does the fingernails, the pedicures, all of that good stuff there. Then we had Lexi's Lash Bar, which was two doors down. Due to the coronavirus and things like that, we couldn't social distance very well because it was in a very small confined place. So we got with the landlord of the strip center and was able to actually get a much larger built, like room down the way, only two doors down. So we were able to actually separate the chairs and social distance six feet apart and not let go of any of our employees. So when we went back to the landlord of the place and was like, hey, we'll do this. And he said, well, you're in a five-year lease, there's nothing you can do. So instead of lose all that money, we were trying to figure out what we could fit in there. And when you do microblading, it's just a one-on-one. And so it's not necessarily a whole bunch of people. You have to make an appointment to come in, all of those kind of situations.
Well, then it sounds like someone from the residential area was, was concerned about the word tattoo and worried about Jesse James and his fans riding up on motorcycles and creating a ruckus. But it doesn't sound like that's your clientele.
Not at all.
Okay.
I would say that, that wasn't specific in her objection of which party, the massage therapy or the tattoo. But, but just more, more information, the cosmetic tattoo establishment, which is the temporary, is, is allowed by right in community commercials. So, but there is, like you said, there's that line between a tattoo parlor and cosmetic tattoos.
I think we just wanted clarification to understand what, what it actually is. And I appreciate you answering the question. Any other questions for the, the business owner while we have him up here? Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it. This is a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience that wants to come forward and speak on this issue, now is the time. You don't have to fill out a form. You can just walk up to the mic. Seeing none at 6:44, I take us out of a public hearing and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 20, 2021-03 as presented.
Charles Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand? All those pose? Excellent. Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
All right, now we're at item number, hit the right one, nine. Consideration action regarding resident city council, Dr. petition to create Belt Mill Public Improvement District. For that, City Manager Gabe Rames.
Mayor and Council, I'm going to address items nine, 10, and 11, all together. They're all related. Bren can weigh in on any specific questions you might have. Representative applicant, Don Allen with Lackland Holdings is, is here. So we're very excited to kick off the Belt Mill project, formerly known as the Trans Farm. So the applicant, and I believe they closed on the property in December, has requested creation of a public improvement district. I won't go over, we've, in the recent past, gone through the mechanics of public improvement district. So that is the first item, accepting that petition to create that district. Now, keep in mind, that does not fund the district. So in future items, we will bring a project plan. We'll get an outline of project eligibility, public infrastructure, that sort of thing. This begins everything. Lackland Holdings has submitted a deposit and reimbursement agreement. So they have fronted some money for professional services related to creating the PID. That is my time, Bren's time, Mark McClainy, financial advisor's time. So that it's paid for not by taxpayers, but by the, the development itself through the, the vehicle, the PID. And then the last item is number 11, is actual contract with our, who will serve as our PID administrator, the city's rep, if you will, P3 Works, as we go through the project planning, project eligibility, creation of the PID, that sort of thing. So again, very excited. We've worked through Belt Mill for two years, literally. Was zoned and, and property closed in December. Really excited to start moving dirt and see it happen. So I'll defer to Bren or Mr. Allen if he'd like to comment. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, what questions do we have? We want to talk to this gentleman or we want to talk to Bren? What do y'all, what's your pleasure, counsel? Questions, concerns? We, we are unofficial PIT experts now after what we've been through last fall. So we at least have some experience in this.
I might mention the, the PID before you this evening will likely proceed at a more comfortable pace. So we're sort of in a different scenario, so.
Right. And, and on number nine, with this, we're going to have to call a public hearing. This is just sort of setting things in motion. Correct?
That's correct.
This is step one of a multi-step process.
That's correct.
Would you like to come and just talk a little about Belt Mill, maybe just a top level to remind us? We haven't heard from you in a while, so maybe just a little top level Belt Mill?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Don Allen. I'm with our Lackland Holdings and all of our various entities. Our, we are here tonight to just kick off this PID process, which is, Gabe mentioned, and y'all have been through recently, you know, is, is a, a multi-step process. So this is just establishing a public hearing, which would happen four or five weeks from now or whenever we set it. We have delivered a check for money for you to use to pay your consultants again. So none of this, none of your efforts or costs or anything come out of the taxpayer's pocket. Everything is funded by us as the developer. And our actual development entity is Saginaw Belt Mill LLC, just for your information. And that's what the paperwork and everything and the agreements between us and the city are in the name of. We have closed on the property. We own it as of December 15th. We're happy to announce that and excited to get moving forward. We are full speed ahead. We're, we have a lot of interest in the property and we're excited about that. You know, as we said, we think the actual, you know, the restaurant and the retail, that'll be a little slower. The single family and, and the multifamily seem to, there's to be a lot of demand. There's, and there's a lot of interest in, in retail and in retail, but we've got to, in restaurants, but we kind of got to get past this COVID thing a little bit just because it affects them more than, gosh, just about any other businesses, so. And that'll happen. And so we're moving full speed ahead. We're excited about it all. And that'll happen. And so we're moving full speed ahead. We're excited about it all. Our, you know, we have no concerns about anything or hesitations. So we're here to get this ball rolling. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We will have a public meeting, hearing next month and wade through some of this. So in the interim, if you have anything you'd like to ask, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions tonight for Mr. Allen?
I have a question that kind of overlaps Gabe as well. So just, I want to, I want to make sure that we have clearly communicated to the developer that there is an expectation that through either the PID or some other financing vehicle like a TERS, that we are discussing with them the opportunity of building a public facility somewhere up there. Not sure what that looks like or what that might be. But since we are essentially encumbering a big portion of our future residents with additional cost through a PID and through possibly a TERS, they need to get something out of that collectively. And that, and I just want to make sure that's been communicated to you, that that is an expectation. That we would like to see some kind of maybe small municipal facility, something out there to serve the community with, with those dollars that are generated out of either the PID or a future TERS. Has that's been communicated? I just want to make that.
Yeah, we've had those discussions in, you know, kind of broad brush. The public infrastructure related to this development is largely roadway, parks amenities, and then a potential future public facility, which, you know, Don and their group, they would love to have a public facility. The PID could pay for the land as well as the facility because it kind of creates a critical mass and drives foot traffic. And so we've had real preliminary discussions. I think we outlined maybe in the zoning, two to three acres as, you know, potential future. But we've, we've had those initial discussions.
I just did not want that to be a bait and switch on you, that we're all setting up here approving a PID and quietly setting on the expectation.
No worries. That was, Gabe's been very upfront from day one about, as he's had discussions with you all very early on, he communicated that to us very clearly, and so not a surprise. Thank you, though.
So in the grand scheme of what you guys are doing in conjunction with other developments east of the main lines or railroad that runs through the city, we have to be very careful about what we're doing with municipal facility development on that side of the main lines. Currently today, there is not one facility serving that community, which very soon will shift the balance of population to the east side of our city as we build out. And we've got to very carefully plan what we're doing with community facilities east of the railroad tracks. So that's all part of a big discussion, especially what we're going to be having tonight about bonds and all that good stuff. So really appreciate the development. We're excited about it. And I'm on board with the PID.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. No other questions, and I will entertain a motion on number nine.
And Mayor, if I could add quickly as well, we can certainly take these one action at a time or they can collectively be approved.
Can we approve nine, 10, and 11 all in one fell swoop?
Yes, sir.
If that's okay with the counsel, that's what I'd love to do. Everybody good with that? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2021-04. I also move that we create a deposit reimbursement agreement between Saginaw Belt Mill LLC and the city of Saginaw. And then I also recommend or make a motion that we approve an agreement for PID services between the city of Saginaw and P3 Works LLC.
Is that good? That work, Brenn? All right. All those in favor? Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, guys. A lot of work's coming to us. We appreciate it, y'all. Let's move forward.
Thank you very much.
All right, now on 12. City action regarding ordinance 2021-04, creation of diversity inclusion committee and appointment of members. For that, City Manager Gabe Brenn.
Mayor and counsel, just a couple of quick notes. One, in the text, there's a little bit of a correction. There's a mention of seven members that are before you for review and creation of diversity inclusion committee. That should be 17. So we advertised, based on the counsel's direction, kind of a call for volunteers and received 17 applications. Those names are in your packet. I think Janice checked or worked with Susie to check, and I think that about four of those folks, or three, happened to not be Saginaw residents, which the direction was that should be folks that either work in Saginaw or live in Saginaw. So three on the list happen to live outside the city limits. But staff's recommended that all the folks that expressed interest be appointed to the committee. They're a recommending body only, so they serve at the counsel's pleasure. We had talked about the comprehensive plan project coming up. I think that the maybe logical next step, should the counsel, you know, approve the group tonight, is get them plugged in the comprehensive plan process. We had talked about doing kind of a city 101, as well as having them visit with the police department, which will happen in the, in the next year. The idea is they meet at least quarterly and make a report to the city council or recommendations to the city council in the future. So we're excited to get started and happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have one question. I know we said that city council members cannot be a member of the committee, which is understandable. Can council members still attend these meetings if they so choose? Is there anything wrong with that?
No, absolutely. And I think I've called for two council liaison positions that could be filled. As long as a quorum of the council doesn't attend and participate, then as many as we would like.
Okay, excellent. Other questions, counsel? Questions concerned? I'm glad we're moving forward with this. This is a great step for us. It's long overdue, and I'm glad we've got some interest, and I look forward to, I know, I saw, I'll get her. I'm not done yet. I look forward to moving forward with this, and I'm glad we're doing it. I hope, hope something good comes out, and I hope the citizens that are involved really rise to the occasion. And I'm sorry, Sidney, good question? Sure? Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Then if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider the actions regarding the ordinance number 21, 2021-04, for the creation of diversity and inclusion committee.
I second the approval.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand? Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, guys. Moving forward, item number 13, update on Bailey Boswell Bridge Project. All right. Now this is what we've been waiting on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel, staff. I'm Brad Rusk. I work for Kimley Horn and Associates. We're helping Rick and his team to kind of manage and keep track of the construction out there on Bailey Boswell. You can see in this photo, we have actually started building some walls, so the approaches that come up to the bridge. And they, over the next few weeks, will be finishing up the substructure for the bridge itself. So maybe March, April, hopefully, we'll see some beams going up and it will start to look like a bridge. I can tell you, there have been some utility conflicts that we've had to address that have impacted the contractor's progress. However, I'm pleased to report the contractor is still well ahead of schedule. So we're doing really well. The contractor's making great progress out there. And I, I think everything is going pretty well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the project.
Are you excited about the progress of the project?
Am I excited about it?
Yes.
I'm very excited. And we are trying to do whatever we can to encourage that progress to continue. So we're engaged constantly with contractor. We're out on site talking about issues that come up. We're trying to facilitate whatever we can to encourage them to get done as quickly as possible.
Questions, questions? So we're ahead of schedule. What are we anticipating on completion right now?
Well, completion by contract, they need to be complete by the middle of next year, so 2022. The contractor's current schedule shows them finishing in 2021. But our suggestion to you is that's pretty aggressive. So it would not surprise me. We've still got some rubber coordination to deal with, some other things of that nature. It might slip a little bit from there. But they are still well ahead of what their contract duration is. And I think they're in really good shape to finish well ahead of that deadline.
What about any budget issues?
No budget issues so far. There have been some minor changes, but they have been dealt with with allowance items that were built into the construction contract.
Okay. Very good news.
Have there been any run-ins with the railroad so far?
Run-ins with the railroad? Well, there was one delay related to a right-of-entry. It was some confusion with them returning it to the city and not to the applicant, the contractor. But we worked through that issue and we've got everything back on track. They, both BNSF and Union Pacific are reviewing some bridge hanging plans that the contractor Weber has submitted. It takes a little while for the railroad, as I'm sure you're aware. But right now, that has not hindered any progress to date. So fingers crossed that things continue to go well with the railroad.
So when you say hanging, you're talking about when beams are set across the foul zone?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
So that area, we've got to hang some beams that are going to go over the tracks. And both entities need to be comfortable with the contractor's plan to get those beams in place because we'll have to work within operational windows, right? We'll only have so many hours at a time for Weber to get in and actually do that work and get back out. So railroads are very sensitive about that specific component.
Yeah. And then I guess you'd see that again in deck forming.
Yeah, there will have to be. And there's ongoing coordination in terms of having railroad flagmen out there anytime work is happening in the railroad roadway.
All right. It's getting exciting.
Yeah.
Counsel, any other questions? All right. Thanks, sir. Appreciate the update. Good news. All right, moving forward. Item number 14, discussion of potential bond election propositions. For that, City Manager Gabe Brenn.
So Mayor and counsel, happy to continue the discussion related to our anticipated May 2021 bond election. I will tell you that action time is soon upon us, and that is we will have to have propositions and have you take action at our next council meeting. So what I'm going to do is have Dolph go over anticipated project schedule. I feel like there's some agreement, or maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, don't need to spend too much more time on the streets projects or the library. The question then becomes related to the proposition of parks and a senior center. So with that, Dolph will go over the anticipated debt issuance and project schedule.
Thank you, Gabe. Mayor and counsel, as Gabe said, he'd ask staff to put together a draft of a debt issuance schedule for the projects that we've been discussing for over a year now. And what we've attempted to do is align the project priorities of the council and the bond committee with the, and also the timing of the projects for our ability to complete them in an efficient manner and then maximize the potential for outside funding through matching or through grants. And it's, and also the need to spread out the debt issuance to have the least negative impact on the tax rate and the taxpayer. So this is exactly what that is, is a draft of the projects and the debt issuance. It's not a construction schedule, but it'd be fairly close. Some of these projects will be designed, will be complete on, and once funds are issued, or if the voters approve the bonds and they're sold, we can immediately go to construction. So that's what this is. Some projects will have a delay from the time that we approve the, get the funding to construction. Of course, they'll overlap. They're going to take, some of them are going to take more than a year. So keep that in mind as I go through this. So in the first year, this fiscal year, so say the voters approve all of the propositions in May, we could issue the debt this fiscal year, and we could actually begin construction on the projects, some of the projects on Knolls, Phase 1 in particular, which was from Edwards to Woodcrest, includes a roundabout at W.J. Bowes. And then we could also do the Knolls intersection improvements at McElroy. So counsel has directed us to proceed with a single lane roundabout. And we also added in this particular project is elimination of the low water crossing to the west of McElroy there at the park. So we could do that simultaneously as we do the construction of the intersection improvements. And so that was a $3 million total cost to take care of both of those. And then lastly would be the design of the library, beginning design of the library project. We could actually get that started this fiscal year, should the voters approve that. So that's year one. Year two would be, fiscal year 21, 22, would be the issuance of the bonds to cover the construction of the library. We'd begin the design this year. Sometime next year, we'd be ready to go to construction on that project. 30,000 square feet. These numbers are today's dollars, but they have a 15% contingency built into them. So we're comfortable that we can get something built with what we've got here. That's a big number, though. So that's a standalone bond, or sale of bonds for that 17 million. Third year, fiscal year 22, 23, we'd be looking at Knolls Drive, Phase 2 construction. Again, Kimley Horn will have all this designed already. That's Woodcrest to McElroy. And because we've already got the intersection stuff done, the McElroy intersection, that would be connecting the Phase 1 to the intersection improvements at McElroy. Phase 3 construction would be the rest of Knolls from McElroy to Longhorn. And as you can see, we've got some cost escalators built in there from today's dollars to when we'd actually issue the debt to build these projects. And talking with Kimley Horn, trying to get an idea of what kind of cost escalation factor we should use. COG is currently using 4% annually. I've got 5% in here just because that makes me a little more comfortable. And we don't have to, once we get to the time to build these things, we don't have to issue all the debt. But we want to make sure we have enough funds in place to cover the cost of the project. So you'll see those numbers, the farther out you go, the larger they get. That's because we built in those escalation factors. So that would be fiscal year 22, 23. Excuse me, the design, or the construction of Knolls, completion of Knolls. But we also have the $4 million in there for parks improvements. That was the number the council gave us. Of course, that's a bunch of individual projects spread out across the city in different parks. But by pushing it out to 22, 23, that gives us time to complete our Parks Minister Plan and our comprehensive plan, which then makes us eligible for grant money through the state. We can submit some of these projects to the state. So we have potential there to maximize our dollars through grants from the state on the parks projects. Fiscal year 23, 24 would be another big issue for McElroy Phase 3. This is from Saginaw Boulevard to Knolls and would include the urban municipal section. We've talked about, remember, we had two options there. We had a straight street section, and we had the urban design, the streetscape design. So that's what these dollars in here would cover, was that particular section. And then also, we'd have money in there for, to begin the design of the senior center project. Total of 12.8 million that year. And then the final year would be the issuance of the funds or the bonds for West McElroy, Phase 4, which would be from Knolls to Old Decatur, and then the construction of the senior center facility. I put a note at the bottom of the page that some of these projects, street projects, may be eligible for matching funding through the Tarrant County Bond Program, should that take place in November. We just don't know, we don't have any details yet, but we feel certain we'd be eligible for some matching funds through the county on some of these street projects. The important thing we want to look at is what are the tax impacts if we were to proceed with this type of issuance? And so Kim has provided that information in the second page.
You make that any bigger?
Make it bigger?
Make it a little bigger?
Yeah.
So we can see a little better?
Okay.
That helps.
So the average, the average home value, 188,000, at the end of the five years of issuance of the debt would be an additional $21.60 a month, or $259.25 a year.
And that's for everything, right?
I'm sorry?
That's for all, all the bond items?
That's for the, that's for the full amount. If we issued 70 million, $850,000, that's the full amount. And that's with 2% annual growth, I think, is what's figured through our.
2% annual growth and an interest rate of 3.5%.
Okay.
So those, both of those assumptions, at this point in time, I would consider pretty conservative.
And I'm going to make an assumption that we would spread out the tax rate increase as well. It would be. It would be, we wouldn't do it all at once, right? Could be over a certain number of years?
But that, this number is based on the way we spread out the issue in, in the previous page.
Okay. Could be that much each year. Okay.
Again, this is a five-year plan. If y'all wanted to take longer to do that, you, you could certainly spread this out over a longer period of time. Uh, when you do that, your, your cost escalation is going to go up. But, I mean, there's lots of options here. This is just a first shot at it, first draft. Uh, we've taken the, the, our best guess in terms of, of current costs from the architects and the engineers, the information they provided us. So, uh, that's all I have there.
Okay. All right. I'm going to make some assumptions here, and council tell me if I'm wrong. My assumption is everybody's pretty good with the thirty-six million for streets. Any issues, big questions with that item? Everybody okay with that, how it's?
Be thirty-seven point one-five.
Okay. Thank you.
Before we go through the list, let, let me ask a question about the issuance.
Okay.
In the next five years, do we have debt falling off?
We do have debt falling off, but it's, the twenty million that we issued for the fire station is going to take up some of that. Um, so you're not going to see a big drop.
Okay. So in the five-year horizon, we won't see?
You're not going to see a big drop. In fact, this, this proposal is, um, delaying some of the principal. So it's not, um, it's not equal like we have in the past. We're working around wherever those gaps are.
So we won't see, essentially, we won't see relief over the next five years as we issue this debt. We're going to continue to see pretty steady growth, hopefully not hitting this two hundred dollar mark.
That's right. This is, like I said, a conservative estimate, right? We, we've got, um, we've got two percent growth. So if some of these projects come to fruition, we'll see more than two percent growth. With our existing tax base, maybe not. I think our big double-digit increases in residential and even commercial industrial are probably gone. Um, we, we had three point four percent this past year. Years before that, we had ten, twelve. I think that's, I don't think that's going to happen. It's probably not going to happen next year either, because our values for next budget cycle are as of January this, this month. And so only the things that have already happened will, will, um, be taken into account in our values going next year. But the year after that, if some of these things come to fruition and it increases our tax base, then, um, will probably be more than two percent.
So, and, and just to tie a bow around the line of question, is that taxpayers will feel this. When we spend the seventy million dollars over the next five years, we'll feel it. It's a commit, it's a commitment from the community, and I think it needs to be made clear that we will feel it. And I think we've all agreed that we need to make this kind of commitment for a better Saginaw in thirty years. So I, I like how we're spreading things out. There may be some other advantages that we, we can discuss when we get into the project-by-project discussion. But that two hundred and fifty thousand, or two hundred and fifty dollar number, average household valuation is probably going to be felt if we go about this plan.
But maybe not to this extent. Again, we're trying to, I don't want to say worst-case scenario, but we're doing a very conservative estimate.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Valerie, you have a question?
I have a question. On sheet one, down here on the senior citizens, you've got, um, nine point five million. And then on sheet two, down here on senior citizens, you've got four million. How, why is that? Did I miss something? On the first, the first sheet one, right here, you've got the total, uh?
This sheet right here?
Yes, nine million, five million, something. And then on sheet two, I'm looking at my email that you sent me. It says, uh, senior citizen, four million, but you got the same total. So I'm confused.
It, it looks like some of the money may have been moved out of the, uh, renovation of the existing library and pushed into the senior center.
Valerie, you say we've got nine and a half total on page one and sheet two. What was the number you're looking at?
We've got four million down here on the senior citizens.
I see eleven million on the senior center.
No, this is on the email that Gabe sent. Okay, that, on my show, he could see it. We see right here where it says senior citizen, four million, right here?
Go through that to Dolph. Can you answer your question?
I'm just confused because you got the same amount, and it's different on this. Okay, so here's sheet one, and right down here, you have nine point five million. Okay, and then on sheet two, right here, you have four million.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And I confused?
Yeah, that's my fault. Uh, when I, when I put this spreadsheet together, I took Kim's original sheet, and I updated sheet one, not realizing sheet two was on there. She later came back and added, updated sheet two, and that's what you have up here in front of you.
I'm just confused. Now, we got the same amount, but two different numbers. And I can't see that one, so.
I can't either.
I can fix that.
So now you have, somehow what you're saying is the senior citizen's estimate cost eleven million?
She's asking if the senior cit, can you turn your microphone?
So the senior citizen, you, what you're estimating is eleven million here?
If you take today's dollars, nine and a half million dollar project, and add a five percent cost es, I mean, we didn't start the escalation until twenty-two, twenty-three, because it was already fifteen percent contingency built into the project. But if you start adding a five percent cost es, escalation in twenty-two, twenty-three, over those next three years, your nine and a half million dollar project is going to cost you eleven million dollars at the time you get five years out.
All right, so can we go back to where I was trying to go a minute ago? So roads, thirty-six million, one, right?
Thirty-seven point one-five.
Sorry, thirty-seven point one-five. That includes Knowles, that includes these McElroy, right? And, and the piece of West McElroy going under the bridge, or, not a bridge, God help us, a, uh, the drainage area.
It, it includes all of Knowles and all of McElroy from the Boulevard to Old Decatur.
Gotcha. Okay. Well said. Is everybody okay with that? That's going to be one separate item. Everybody thumbs up on that one? We good? Everybody happy? Okay. Next, library. Library seventeen?
Eighteen point seven.
Okay. Eighteen point seven. All right. Everybody okay with that? And that says?
So, just so that I'm clear, this includes escalation or does not include escalation?
It has a fifteen percent contingency built in it today's dollars, which is probably more than sufficient to get us to next year's construction if we go that way.
Okay. So you think we could absorb that escalation in the contingency?
Yeah, we, we did the same thing with the fire station project. Uh, we had a fifteen percent contingency in there, and, uh, that, that's proved to be a good number so far.
And we're assuming library construction would begin in twenty-two anyhow, so you don't have to have too many years out, right?
Right.
Okay. So is everybody okay with that? Okay with the roads? Okay with the library? Is that good? Good with that? Okay. So those two items, done. So the question's coming to the senior center. It's the senior center slash parks together. So we had said four million for parks. Is that straight up four million? Okay. So whatever numbers on there, take off four million for parks, which money will go to the Parks Board. They'll prioritize it. Great, using the Master Parks Plan. Cool. So the question that he has that I've heard about is senior center. So what we have, uh, what Gabe sent out this afternoon is two options. A ten thousand square foot senior center and a fifteen thousand square foot senior center. The ten thousand being with escalators, with the contingency cost, six point seven million, right? And then the fifteen thousand with the escalator contingency cost at nine point five million. So that's really where our discussion needs to be, what the council wants. What's the council pleasure on a senior center? So I think we said before that, uh, if we included, uh, build-out for the, the, what, what was the, the, how did we get to fifteen thousand with the build-out, Gabe? How did that math work?
So the facility assessment from March of nineteen took two factors in, uh, consideration. Ultimate population of the city, which is thirty-five, thirty-six thousand, as well as the staff needed to support that ultimate population. So without, and this is something that, you know, should council approve, voters approve, we get into the fun stuff, which is design elements. That's all it said. Space needs, based on these two factors, here's something we should consider. Doesn't mean we have to, of course, um, but for the senior center, again, without design, programming, that sort of detail, that would be part of the design process, um, that's where the fifteen thousand square feet came from.
And do we know amenities-wise, what the difference would be? What kind of programming would be in a fifteen thousand that would not be in a ten thousand?
Uh, I think the short answer is that would be, that would be direction from the council, uh, through the design process. So, um, i- if the, if the direction is we, we have some set amount for the facility, you know, whatever that set amount is, we're going to try to, to build the best senior center we can for that set amount, uh, as well as, you know, visit with staff, Christie and, and the folks at program, and the seniors, and, and see what we can get out of that facility. So. Uh, but to answer your question specifically, uh, no, we haven't gotten there, that level of detail. I think Councilmember Big Horse had a discussion with the architect related to specific kitchen and teaching kitchen type equipment, all, you know, things that would be identified with more clarity in the design process.
Okay. And so that's really our questions tonight, council. Um, I'd like to hear what the, the council thinks. I'll start over here with Mary.
Mr. Mayor, just, uh, sorry, just one thought. You know, if we set some maximum amount, whatever that maximum amount is for the senior center, the way the Attorney General has allowed this proposition is that parks and senior could be combined together as one use, because they're generally recreation-related. So let's say we bid a project and we come in a million dollars under. Of course, we want to be under in our projects. That means the council could, uh, direct any savings to other eligible projects, which would be, um, parks projects. Uh, I'll put him on the spot, but we have a member of the Parks Board and, um, guaranteeing you there, any amount of money we could send to parks, they can use. We have some Parks Board alumni as well, uh, Councilmember Tucker and Beasley. So, you know, these are big scary numbers that I understand. The reality is, we hope not to spend them, but we set a not-take-seat amount that could be redirected to other uses.
All right. I think what we saw a couple of years ago was there was at least twenty million dollars in parks improvements we had looked at on the, the Parks Plan two or three years ago. So there's, there's no, no lacking of places.
The projects are out there.
Of projects. So, yeah. All right. So, I'm sorry, Mary. Go ahead.
Um, I just think it's very important that we go with the fifteen thousand square feet for the senior center. I don't think we should be short-sighted, looking into the future. And this is supposed to be a thirty-year plan. And I wouldn't want us to come up in fifteen years if we did the ten thousand. Whoops, we're out of space already. So I think we need to plan well for the future and make sure we have the right amount of space for growth. We are getting the, uh, assisted living facility that will add to our population of seniors. And some of these mixed-use developments will certainly have some people in that age group also. So I think, you know, our senior population will grow. And we need to make sure we take that into consideration and don't scamp on the square footage.
Well, I thought the council had, um, made the decision to, for the ten thousand square feet with, uh, the, uh, five thousand sque, square feet over at Belt Mill. I think that having ten thousand here is important, which would also allow us opportunity to build something on the other side of the tracks, uh, for the seniors. So I'm, I want to stick with what the council decided. When we talked about this at a previous meeting, Patrick had said something about three hundred dollars per square foot. Now I see it's four hundred and seventy-five dollars per square foot. You know, I'm curious as to why that was not mentioned back when we said four million dollars instead of nine and a half million dollars.
And, well, I want to defend my parametric cost. Uh, the, the four million, we all came up with the four million based on a ten thousand square foot facility.
Right.
At four hundred dollars a square foot. That's four million dollars.
Three hundred dollars a square foot with a million for the amenities.
Okay. When, when you say amenities, we're talking about furnishings and things of that nature. Inside, so F, F, and E, which is furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. So four million all in is what we all talked about. So, and that was based on a four hundred dollar per square foot total all in.
Correct. All-inclusive, yes.
For the senior center here on this side of town. I recall the discussion distinctly.
Yes.
So I, I think you're, you're absolutely right. I, I, I came up with that number because I think it's consistent with the type of construction, uh, what I have mentioned to, uh, it, so, so two things to consider here. First off, the fifteen thousand square foot facility assessment is the opinion of one architectural firm. Okay? It is a professional opinion, and it's based on programming that has been given to that architectural firm to consider. And that programming baseline comes from staff. So essentially what we're doing is we're making a decision not only on size of facility, but we're already, we've already communicated through staff essentially what that programming is. And to, to hit on that specifically, in the current parametric cost, the four seventy-five that you're seeing, and as a standalone facility, it includes, uh, exercise equipment and an exercise room. Well, I don't know that we as a council have had a discussion about why are we building in redundancy when we have a recreation center with exercise equipment?
If they can use free.
So, so what, what is it that we're doing with this facility and programming that may be redundant in services that we already offer in different buildings? And do we want to create a siloed environment where the senior citizens go and do that function alone at this one building? Or do we want to encourage our senior citizens to, to mingle and to get out in the community and exercise with young people? And we haven't had that discussion. So there are some programming assumptions that have been made. And I do believe that those, those programming assumptions can still be paid for, for four hundred dollars a square foot. I honestly believe that. So the second component that is one professional opinion is the probable cost estimate, which is the four seventy-five you're referring to. So not only is the square footage based on program information provided to the professional service at an opinion, the cost, the probable cost estimate is also an opinion. So what we're kind of banking on here is, hey, one firm's opinion on size and one firm's opinion on cost. Should we use that as our barometer? I, you know, I think that i- if I were not in my own right in that same industry, I would put a lot of faith in it, for example, because Gabe and staff is not going to bring somebody to us that doesn't know what they're talking about. Okay? So they've brought somebody to us that knows what they're talking about. But we also have to consider that an architect is paid on a fee basis. Their money comes from the value in which they design and it's constructed. So you kind of have to weigh a little bit of how much is, how much of this is motivated by, we want to make some money here? How much of this is also motivated by, I want to make sure that I'm covered when I give this city this parametric cost? So the difference between the four hundred that I had mentioned and the four seventy-five that you see, it's just opinions, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Since you, since you did mention that I was the one that threw the, the amount out there. I honestly believe that four hundred dollars per square foot is a good number.
I, I agree. Um, it's just kind of hard to, you know, get people to trust us when we tell them it's going to be a four million dollar building one week, and then the next meeting, it's like, oh, it's now nine and a half million dollars for the same thing. But, you know, we're giving you, uh, five thousand extra feet that the council had not agreed upon.
Remember, we haven't voted on a thing yet, so.
Yeah, it's also been.
Well, we had talked about it.
We've been talking, we haven't.
We had agreed. It wasn't official, but we had agreed.
Mr. Mayor?
And, uh, it's just, you know, it, it's, it's very uncomfortable for me as a council member. And then, okay, I have another question. I think you gave one to.
I was, I was just gonna, and maybe could we pull the, no.
I was, I was just gonna, and maybe, could we pull, no. So this is a summary version. I can get this all to you. I'll just go over briefly how we got to the approximately 15,000. It totals 14,600. Lobby and reception area, 1,500 square feet, including receptionist desk, information center, coffee cafe, admin suite, which is staff space, 580 square feet. Game room for we, TV lounge seating, 650 square feet. Another 650 square feet arts and crafts room, an additional 650 square feet for medium activities room, large activities room of 1,000 square feet. Large multipurpose hall, which, you know, if you think of a log cabin now, that's the main area, 3,200 square feet. The fitness center, we've talked about that, 600 square feet. Commercial kitchen, 1,200. There's some storage, restrooms, and the balance gets you to the rest of the facility. I know it's hard to, you know, spit these numbers out, so short of somebody like council member Farr working with this, it's hard to visualize. But we sort of outline generally, and again, the specifics won't come until design, but that's what we're, we're talking about. And, and if it's helpful for reference, the, I just want to mention, really anything that we could make that's ADA compliant and is going to be an improvement of the log cabin, it's also going to be larger. The existing log cabin is, is it 44?
4,000.
How, how big is the existing log cabin? Is it 4,000? Yeah. So.
But they don't use all that.
Anything we're discussing would be an improvement.
So.
Gabe, are you actually looking at build out for Saginaw? Are you looking for, right now?
We're looking at the ultimate population build out, which is, you know, approximately.
For the 15,000 square feet?
Correct. Which, again, that's approximate population, 35,000, as well as the staff that would be necessary to support that.
All right. Let's go back to Cindy. Cindy?
And you don't want to build this until, what, 2025? Is that what, so what are our seniors going to do for the next five years?
So the, the temporary solution would be, we had talked about this in the past, I don't believe that there was a desire of the council to put substantially more money into the log cabin, although it's certainly still available. There would be space at the existing recreation center once we get back to normal functioning.
That's an awful long time for seniors to have to wait for something that they've lost. A terribly long time.
Yeah.
And a lot of our seniors won't be around to see it. I just don't, I just don't think it's fair. So what are our other options?
So, again, the existing facility will be there in its existing state. The question becomes, I think the number was, you know, 150-some thousand to make the facility-related repairs that are needed now, as well as make the facility ADA compliant. If that's the council's pleasure, you know, we could put money into that facility, knowing that it'll be a, a bridge until, assuming voters approve, we build a new facility.
What is wrong with the log cabin now?
Yeah. I sent a, I sent a spreadsheet at a previous, it's part of a previous workshop, but there's plumbing issues. Off the top of my head, I'll have to circle back with you with the, the building official. There's plumbing issues, the exterior is separating. I don't know what the technical term is, but, you know, the logs are separating and need to be corrected. You've got, unfortunately, the issue that's present there with the existing fire station, you've got moisture coming up, as well as ADA compliance and parking. So that all total was 150-some thousand.
So again, there's no possible way to expedite the building of this senior center, something before 2025?
So, so it's a, it's a matter of sequencing and when we do the debt issuance.
We can't exchange it with the library?
It's council's, be up to the, you know, project sequencing would be discretion of the council.
I mean, I'm looking for other options here. 2025's a long way off. And I just don't think it's fair to the seniors.
Okay. Mary, do you have something?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but first of all, we have to see what passes.
Correct.
And then let's hope everything passes. And if it does, then, then would be, would we be in a position to have a discussion about whether or not we wanted to change the positions of some of these items? And that would, in other words, we're not at the point right now, we don't even know if these things are going to pass. Once they pass, then we can have those discussions. And might I remind everyone that every single year we have elections, and we might see a different makeup of the council, and those people might have different ideas. So to me, we're putting the cart before the horse. It's not time to make that decision yet. I mean, first, let's get them passed, hopefully. Then if we, as a majority of the council, do not like how these things are sequenced, then we can change that, can we not, at that time?
Well, it's nice to know that we have options before we even go into the election.
We, we do.
I'm not saying that we have to change it. I just want to know what our other options are.
It's not the time. We already, we already have been told we do have options.
It's a fair point. So the, what Dolph outlined, the north section of Knowles is the priority because there's localized flooding, you know. Is it John Kennedy and Leatherman, that north section floods, it needs to be corrected. The, the cost is not necessarily in the pavement with Phase One in Knowles. It's with building a, a big storm sewer system. Because as we're all aware, Saginaw, Texas is super flat, so making water, you know, go away where it pools is hard because we don't have a lot of grade. That's the immediate need. The, the other street-related project would be the intersection, the low-water crossing, again, at Knowles and McLaRoe. And then, you know, design for the library. So, you know, it could all change. I would say, as far as delivery, because of an immediate issue, that north section of Knowles, makes sense to do as quickly as possible as we're, as well as the intersection of Knowles and McLaRoe. So from there, the council certainly has flexibility. I don't envy your position, I might add, in having to, you know, you've got two very passionate groups, users with the library and the senior center, so.
So what's, what's the concern with doing multiple projects at the same time? Is it, is it staff? Is it debt? Is it?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's debt. I mean, so the reality, we could issue all the debt at once, but your tax impact would be very dramatic. Council member Farr mentioned that. The desire is to try to issue debt in a manner where we can deliver projects sequentially and not get overloaded, but also not maximize the tax rate quickly. Throughout all this, we buy some capacity based on the very conservative estimates. So these, this 2% growth, Belt Mill, in a couple of years, will get us that, you know, easily. 3.5% debt, if you'll recall, what were our COs? Was it two?
Two.
Two, two some percent, two and a half percent. We're in a favorable interest rate environment. So say that because the projections are the absolute worst-case scenario. But generally, the phasing is, is to not max the tax rate so quickly.
It sounds like maybe, and Cindy brings a good point, maybe we will talk about, after the election, which is in May, we come back in May or June, as a council, we prioritize. We send them prioritize. We've got, whatever passes, we've got that, and how do we want to lay it out? With the debt, with the projects altogether. Does that sound like reasonable, everybody?
I need to clarify.
Can we finish talking to the senior citizen?
We're not done yet. Don't worry. We're not done. But I'm just thinking, Cindy brought that point. I didn't want to lose that point, so.
I would like to clarify, though, the cost of postponement. Postponing a 15 or a $9 million project will cost us $2 million over five years. So advancing that project instantaneously removes $2 million worth of GO bond request. So we've just reduced the bond request by $2 million by advancing the project. So, you know, there are extreme advantages to building both facilities simultaneously. General conditions is a term used in the industry, what it costs the general contractor to deliver the project, meaning their trailer, their porta-potties, their fences, their supervision, all of that is tied up into what's known as general conditions. If you build both facilities simultaneously, your general conditions are shared. You're paying half price. If you wait three years to build a facility, you're paying general conditions twice. General conditions represents anywhere between 8% and 12% of construction cost. So let's just peg it at 10%. A $9 million facility, you're going to pay $900,000 to build it later in general conditions. So not only are we kicking the can down the road and taking on an additional $2 million worth of GO bond debt, we're also incurring an additional $900,000 worth of cost in secondary general conditions. That's $2.9 million to delay the project.
To say nothing of the disruption of the neighborhoods next to it.
That's right. A prolonged disruption. Backup beepers on concrete trucks can be heard for six blocks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Back to Cindy. So you have any other questions or comments on the, Cindy? You're done? Okay.
I was just concerned because, you know, the price had more than doubled from what we had talked about. The building had increased another 50% from what we had talked about. And it just makes it a very uncomfortable situation, you know, when people, when citizens call me up going like, what's going on here?
We haven't had, we haven't had a bond election yet, so there's nothing to really worry about until we.
Well, I know, but they're asking questions so they can make decisions about a bond.
All right. Charlie, what do you have? Mr. Tucker?
I think we ought to go with the 15,000 square foot. Now, as far as when you do that, what one on the list do you want to knock off first and put the senior center there? And that's what we're talking about here. So I still think we need to do the build out and do the, the big one now. But as far as where it falls in line, I don't know.
Mary, pro 10.
Okay. My concern is, I think that we should go ahead and build the 10,000 square foot over here, put the 5,000 square foot over in the east side. You got two centers, make them both awesome, save a little bit of money, do the library and the senior citizen together, so that they, like Patrick said, you're going to save some money. My only request is, when y'all go to decorating, I think the senior citizens over here should look like a train depot, and the library should look like a grain elevator, or silos of some kind.
You're getting into the fun stuff now.
Yes, I am. But I just feel like a 10,000 square foot over here, plus they have the rec center and the library right next door, I think they would be ecstatic with 10,000 square feet over here. And then if Belt Mill, or whatever, builds us a 5,000, then we just got to furnish it. Is that correct? Because they're not going to furnish it. And so that would be an awesome thing. And then we have two instead of one, and everybody could be happy. This is my opinion.
I'd like the 10,000 and the 5,000.
I had a question about the 10,000. Cindy, I know you were talking then about the, the commercial kitchen and the training kitchen. Can a 10,000 square foot facility hold the kind of kitchen we were talking about, you were talking about?
They were looking at 1,200 square feet, if I understand correctly, for a kitchen area. And I think we can easily do that. One of the other things that was requested by probably 20 or more seniors that I talked to is, they want some outdoor area, private outdoor area, not something shared with, like they have on the layout, like right there on the boulevard. So they can do some exercises, so they can be outside and get fresh air. COVID has taught us nothing else, and I, Dolph heard me mention this at the meeting with the architect, if COVID has taught us nothing else, our, not just our seniors, but everybody needs, you know, healthy meals. They need to spend 15, 20 minutes a day outside. They need fresh air. They want outdoor space, and they want it to be private, not shared. That's not going to cost, you know, because you're not building anything, you're landscaping that area. So they would have that extra 5,000 square feet or whatever we could allocate in outdoor activities. Do crafts outside while the weather is nice. Just spend times, some time outdoors and, you know, sitting around in a nice garden where they can just have some quiet moments type of thing. And I think we can do that with a 10,000 square foot building and some outdoor area.
Do we think, I mean, I'm happy with a 10,000 square foot, with one caveat. Do we think the seniors would be okay with going from over there, the senior center, to across the street for the rec center exercise? Or would they want a rec, a exercise facility all in their one facility? That's my question. How would that work for the seniors? Would they want that? Would they utilize it more if it was in their own place? Or would they be okay going across the rec center?
Well, you're building a new rec center, right? And they go to this one quite often, don't do, don't they go to this one pretty often?
Some do, yes.
Yeah. Like the younger seniors or whatever. And most of the exercises that the senior citizens do at the center now, you can ask Christie, is yoga by chair. They do things like that, that they don't have to move very much because they don't want to fall.
That's correct.
And the we.
Low-impact.
Games that they play.
And if we think they're okay using both facilities, then I'm fine with 10,000. My, my big reason for a bigger one was to incorporate the recreation, the exercise aspect in the same facility, if that's what the seniors really wanted and needed.
But it's kind of like Patrick said, that would also give them some, they can, you know, visit.
If they're okay doing that, transferring back on a walking, driving, back and forth, if we think that's okay.
I think they would enjoy it myself personally.
Okay. That's what I was asking you. Mary, yes, ma'am?
I just want to get a lot of different thoughts out there, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. And I will certainly be willing to go along with whatever the majority of the council wants when it is time to make that decision, which is not now. But another thought that occurred to me was if we had a 10,000 square foot and a 5,000 square foot, would we not need to duplicate staff? So we would have to hire twice the staff.
But that's not going to cost 5 million.
We'd have to, we'd have to staff the other facility, yeah. Whatever that number is, we don't know, but there would have to be staff there, absolutely.
Yeah.
And whatever the, is the center across in Belt Mill, whatever that is.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Might not, we would have to staff that facility on the east side of the tracks in Belt Mill. Whatever it is, we'd have to, can you hear me? Okay. I always talk too loud, so I'm afraid. So we would have to staff the Belt Mill facility, one way or the other. If it's a community center, if it's a rec center, if it's a senior center, whatever, we'd have, the city person would have to work there. So that would be additional.
So are you saying if we built a 15,000 in one place, we would have to add to the staff? Is that what you're saying?
I think absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Agree with that?
Aren't you going to have to anyway, Keith? If you, if you have one 15,000 square foot one, or a 10,000 and 5,000, you're still going to have to have additional staff, aren't you? That's what I thought, because they can only, yeah.
We build these nice facilities, they're going to come back and ask for more staff.
Okay.
With the fire station, with the library, with senior center, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. That's going to be part of it.
And then I had two other, just thoughts to think about, is what I'm trying to put forth, is I don't know of any city this size that has two separate senior centers. For example, I know it may have changed, but Hurst and Bedford share one senior center. So it seems kind of, while we're doing it, have two. And the one that is 5,000, those people that use that facility, would that be for different activities that are not at the 10,000 one?
I think Keith has a.
And then only, one other thing, is would the people that use the 5,000 feel they weren't getting as much as the people on this side with the 10,000 foot facility? Those are just thoughts that I've had. So do you have an update on the Hurst and Bedford situation?
Yes. And even when I worked there, of course, they had, it was a Bedford-Hurst senior center, and I don't remember the exact year, but probably, give or take, eight, eight years ago. ago, they split, Hurst wanted their own, and they built their own on, I believe it's Pipeline, or I think it's Pipeline Road, and hers, or Bedford still has their existing one.
But it might be kind of fun to have two, you know?
Well, and before we get too deep in the Belt Mill Center, we don't know what that's going to be yet.
Yeah.
We've talked about it being a multi-use facility, not just a seniors, some kind of community facility, some kind of, we even talked incubator stuff, we talked conference base, we talked multi, so it could be seniors well, but other things, but that's to be determined, we don't know.
Yeah.
So we're, it's all hypothetical, but there will be something, some community, some municipal facility on the east side.
And we're kind of a multi-city senior center anyway, because we let anybody from any other city come in for free and participate. So we have, what, Lake Worth, and Rome, and Roanoke, and all kinds of places that, you know, that come in and use our facility.
All right, we don't kick people out, do we?
No, we don't.
And that's good.
Makes bingo more fun.
There you go. All right. Other folks? Patrick, you got more? I didn't want to skip over you.
Yeah, no, it's okay. So I want to make sure that, in the big picture of things, like we talked about earlier with, with the Belt Mill development, our city will never, ever, ever, ever be walkable from east to west, will not be. We have zero community facilities on the east side of our city, zero. And even if we built something at Belt Mill, it's still not going to serve the people to the south, quite frankly, from a walkable standpoint. I can tell you that our municipal complex here today, where it sits, is walkable from 1.5 miles both directions, which gets people from the south side of the city all the way up to the north side of the city. If they wanted to, they could walk to our facilities, okay? On the east side, they cannot do that. What we've, our biggest goal, as our city planning has gone on for the last six years, has to make our city more walkable, okay? Meaning we should have facilities that community members could walk to. And right now, the east side does not have that opportunity. And as we develop Belt Mill, and as we develop whatever White's property will ultimately become, right now it's starting to look like high-density housing with some sprinkled-in commercial. As that develops, as I mentioned earlier, our population's center of gravity will shift, where we're probably 12,000 strong on the west side now, and 10,000 strong on the east side, we're about to see that dynamic change. So the majority of our population will live on the other side of the railroad tracks with zero opportunities to walk to a municipal facility. To address your comment a moment ago, if a 10,000 square foot facility is built here for seniors, and a 5,000 square foot facility is built there for seniors, I don't have any problem making a 7,500 square foot culinary senior citizen center on this side of the tracks, and a 7,500 square foot exercise facility on the other side of the tracks, because those seniors will have a place they can walk to and work out. Here, I mean, you can walk to our recreation center and work out. Over there, they won't be able to walk to it and work out.
But doesn't most of your seniors, though, live on this side of the track?
Not for long.
Not for long, not when they build that.
You've got Mariposa on that side of the tracks, Belt Mill is already talking about a 50-plus, and there's probably going to be a 50-plus development that might come out of Ms. White's property. If that's the case, then the bulk of our senior citizens will probably live on the east side of the tracks.
And all of the seniors are not going to be at one center at one time, anyway.
And what I, all I'm getting at here is, is the question that's before us is a GO bond issuance, general obligation bond, all right? And what we're talking about is, is we're wanting to harvest as much money as we can to do as much as we can to make Saginaw a better place 30 years. Now, that harvesting doesn't necessarily have to come through just GO bonds. We've just talked about the PIT opportunities and the TERS opportunities. There's PIT opportunity to the north on the east side of the tracks, and there's TERS opportunity, as well as here, where Ms. White's property is at. So there are funding mechanisms abounding on the east side of the tracks that we, as a council, need to be taking advantage of, and not just banging on the door and asking for people to vote on a GO bond. So if there are synergy opportunities to say, okay, we have all these various funding mechanisms, that by the way, once we pass the PIT, nobody has to go out and ask for votes for that money, the money's coming in, right? It's done. So those projects can be funded out of a PIT or TERS. These projects that we're talking about have to be funded from GO, and we've got to think about, what is it that we need to improve? That's the reason every one of us to the, to the seat up here agrees wholly on the street projects, right? Because it's serving a part of our community that a TERS or a PIT might be able to assist with, the McElroy project, for example. But for the most part, our Knowles problems, all of those things, those are solved by the GO bond issue request we are mounting right now. I am glad that our discussion is centered on what I would call icing on the cake, because a new senior citizen center is truly icing on the cake, and I think it would do our community very well. What I don't want to see happen is the icing spoil the whole cake. And I really believe that if we're talking about moving from a $4 million range facility, and let's just say, for giggles, it's now a $6 million facility on this side of the tracks, I don't want to see that now an $11 million facility, and we are handstrong on whatever we're going to do in the future. So I think a four to $6 million budget that we establish as a group to say, staff your $6 million bucks, make something happen, and if that guidance is around the order of, I'd like to see a culinary senior center on this side of the tracks, and a exercise-related senior center on the other side of the tracks, so that it's a walkable facility, I think that's the win-win. I think that's the solution, and let the PIDs and let the TERS pay for that facility, and not through the GO bond request.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, so what I'm hearing, and I think majority of the council, I'm hearing, everybody's, the majority is for the 10,000 square foot. That's what I've heard from the most folks. I don't, I don't want to take a vote, but that's, the majority I have heard is 10,000. So we're happy with 10,000, we've got $4 million for parks, $6 million for the 10,000 square foot facility. Everybody okay with that? So 10 million total?
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Let's, please don't get hung up on square footage. But whatever you do setting here tonight, don't get hung up on square footage, because, quite frankly, if the facility designs out at 8,200 square feet, and it provides one heck of a culinary arts with a large, here, I'm going to speak to the program. The numbers that Gabe just mentioned, 1,500 square feet for a lobby and reception area and a coffee bar, okay? And then 600 square foot for exercise, that's a total combined square footage of 2,100 square feet. At $400 a square feet, foot, that's $850,000 we would be spending on a lobby and an exercise room. Almost a million bucks in this program. That's at $400 a square foot. When we start getting closer to the 475, guys, that's a million bucks for a lobby and 600 square foot exercise room. So I don't want us to get hung up on the square footage discussion. I think what we should get hung up on is, what's the budget? What are we going to set the budget at? And what is the program? Because if, if we don't at least give staff that opportunity, or let them be armed with that mission, we're failing them. So if we, what's more important, the square footage or the budget? Because if the square footage has to hold at 10,000, let's say the market increases, and now all of a sudden 10,000 square foot can't be bought for 7.2 million, they lost. We just set them up for failure, right? So we say, here's the budget, here's the program, please make that happen. That's what I'm suggesting, rather than getting hung up on square footage. I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to be long-winded about that, but I think it's important.
So 4 million for parks, 6 million for our senior center? Everybody okay with that? Everybody okay with that? Good with that? Staff, is that good? Is that clear? I think that's pretty clear. So we got the, we got the park, we got the streets, got the library, we got the parks/ senior center. That's what we need? Everybody good? Dolph, you good? You happy? I want to make Dolph happy, I want to make Dolph smile. All right. I think we're done with that. Moving forward. Fifteen, discussion regarding 2021 work plan.
Sorry, Mayor, before we move on, let me, let me add one last thing.
Okay.
I want to make sure that I understand that the numbers that we're presenting tonight, $6 million for the, for the senior citizens facility, does not include soft cost. Okay? So I want to make, make sure that we're all clear. Soft cost is the design cost, and that $6 million does not include escalation cost. That is stick and brick, we want a $6 million stick and brick facility, okay? Just to be clear about that, so that they don't walk away thinking that that $6 million should include escalation, or should include soft costs.
So, so to be clear, and that's a fair point, what we need to walk away with, we've already established streets and library, is the total not-to exceed amount for that proposition.
For the bond.
Right. So if it's the 4 million for parks, okay, 6 million for the facility, 10, y'all, y'all tell us how much for the escalation and soft costs, and we'll just write it down, that'll come back to you next meeting, and, and that'll be the proposition.
So the, the question then to Dolph is, in your conversations with the architect, percentage-wise, what is that soft cost running, between 8 and 10%?
Well, your professional design fees are going to be 10%.
Okay.
Your, probably your most expensive items outside of the building shell itself are going to be things like IT, data, AV, security systems, and then FFNE. So, you know, we can, we can approximate some of those costs based on a $6 million new construction, however many, whatever that square footage is, you know, whatever that comes out to be at the time you build it. And really, that's pretty much it. I'd, I'd count on 10% professional fees, the other items that I've talked about, and then any contingency you think we should have in there, depending on, and cost escalation, depending on when we build it. If, if y'all want for me to adjust this, again, this was just a draft, this is a place to start talking. If we want to load up some of the debt issuance for this year, add another six or seven million this year, make it 18 million the first year, and move the senior center up, we can do that. It's going to affect your tax rate, and when, when your taxes go up, but that's what we're going to be able to show you. You just tell me what you want and when, we'll do it.
So to be clear, the 6 million would include stick, brick, FFNE, and contingency, okay?
Well, you tell me what you want it to include.
And that's, I'm, I'm, when we're saying 6 million, those in my mind are all hard costs, okay? Those are hard costs, because you can walk up and touch them.
Okay.
Okay? So the 6 million would include all hard costs for the facility, which would be stick, brick, FFNE, and contingencies.
Okay.
So on top of that, you think that design fees are 10%?
At least.
Okay, so then let's say-
Now, I'm talking about not just design fees, but we've got materials testing, geotechnical, all those things that go into it.
So what do you think that percentage is? 12 to 15%?
12 to 15.
Okay, so 15% on top of the 6 million would be soft cost. And then if we advance the project to start design in 2022, with construction simultaneous with the library, what would we need to budget for escalation?
Uh, I'll look at it. Yeah, 5%, annually.
Okay, so let's say it's, it's at least 5%.
Yeah.
If we start construction in 2022. So 5% on top of the 15, that's an extra 20%, 20% of 6 million is 1.2 million.
Or 7.2.
7.2 million, including all costs. That sound better than 11 million?
Much better.
So, so the total proposition would be 11.2, that is, the 4 for parks, 7.2 for the senior center.
Yes.
Okay. Yep. Everybody good with that? All right. Fair enough. Thank you, Patrick. Thanks for the clear.
Sorry about that.
All right. Now we're moving on to fifteen, discussion regarding 2021 work plan. City Manager Abraham.
Mayor and Council, I'll keep this really brief. I sent a project list out to you, this is a starting place. I hope that we can get a work plan adopted here in the next month or so, before we get into budget discussions, and also into the information sharing and educational piece of, of our bond election. Really, all I'm looking for this evening is if I have missed any projects, you know, we can talk further later, but we've already kind of touched on several of these projects already that we know are coming. So with that, happy to answer any questions, and I'll bring this back to you at a later date.
Can you put your list up on the screen?
It's in the cover sheet, but let me, I'll just run through them real quick.
Let me find it. Yeah. I couldn't find it in the pack.
It's in the email.
When did we get email? I don't know if I saw it.
Oh, I got you. That's all we have in the pack.
When was it?
Okay. I sent, sorry about that. I sent you the, sent an email, the 8th, I think. But anyway, so no surprise to anybody, bond election, preparation, delivery plan, we've already touched on that.
I got it.
Shared services plan with Blue Mountain, this is a consideration potentially for shared police and fire services. Diversity and Inclusion Committee creation, now that would go to the implementation phase. The comprehensive plan process, as well as future adoption. Mental health services in the police department. Western Center PIT, which is Ms. White's property, that is currently kind of in a holding status, although it's coming back soon. The Belt Mill PIT, we've already discussed that. We may discuss it at a future date, a TERS as another financing mechanism for potential developments. Salary study update and an action plan. For lack of a better term, a business-type incubator concept at Willow Creek Park. Succession planning, redevelopment opportunities, sort of broadly. Streetscape improvement plan, by that I mean sort of looking at our corridors, you know, we would define the streetscape related to McElroy through the design process, the urban street, that detail, that sort of thing. We'll continue updating our code of ordinances in pieces and parts. Code enforcement is, is going to continue to be a major staff effort. I think it's practical to define a focus area. Staff, if you recall, before the, before the holidays, did an update on Saginaw Boulevard enforcement, so that's going to continue, and then due to a number of factors, a lot of the staff capacity has shifted on, to some hotels, which we're sort of currently working on some plans to address the need for an extended stay motel and regulations there. I would characterize these next projects as kind of carryover, that is, we've talked about them, they're in progress, various stages of progress, and we'll keep moving forward. The Armory Project, so we're waiting on kind of next steps engagement letter from federal lobbyist. Municipal Center Master Plan, again, we've already kind of talked about that in the context of the bond program. Our Parks and Trail Master Plan is, we have an IPO, it's currently underway. And then Knowles and McElroy are in various stages of design, and we'll enter pending voter approval, we'll, we'll get to construction. So again, I know it's late, and we've, we've discussed a lot of things, what I'm looking for is maybe your comments, and we'll pick this up next meeting.
Any comments right now? Any questions, comments? Mayor Proten? Patrick?
Yeah, I think we need to work very fast to make this actionable, and just like we did last year, adopt it as an ordinance. But I think in order to do that, Gabe, if you could, each of these items, in project management style, if you could kind of outline what we should expect your progress to be over the course of the year. I don't see you finishing a lot of these in the course of the year, but I think it's important just to gauge and set success expectations, that you outline what you think, what you should be able to accomplish within the next 12 months, for example. Sure. And that be part of the ordinance, so that we, we have an understanding of that between you and us, and I know that we've kind of talked about, behind the scenes, about tying that to other things. Sure. And that would be an important component to it. So an ordinance very soon, and that ordinance including what you believe to be reasonable timeline for execution or progress. Yeah.
That's- And that's including some subtasks as well, right?
Yes, exactly.
Milestones, and, okay. Mr. Beasley? My, my ask to the council would be, if you look at this list and you see any holes, any big things that are missing, let Gabe know immediately. Is there any big thing, you know, I really risked this was on there, or why are we doing this? Just big picture stuff, let Gabe know very, very soon. So that's, that's the whole, that's all we need to talk about tonight, just where we are. Take a look at it, think about it. If there's anything there that's missing, you know, raise your hand. Anything else, Gabe?
No, that's, that's all for now.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, so moving forward, so at 8:10, recess and executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551 to 087, discussion regarding economic development negotiations. We will return to adjournments.